To call me to order at August 11th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We're driving the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America, and to the Republic, over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh my gosh.
God bless you. Better than virus.
All right Chuck, you're up.
Okay, well, it's been a while since we got to get this, so with the delays in the project, but Jeff thought it would be good if we came in and give you an update on the project. And I just wanted to let you know that Keith just started working for us and he's been a great ad because he's worked on the design of the project. Started, when did you start?
Middle end of May.
Yeah, so we really couldn't get started on the design too much until we got approval from DEP on the pump test report. I mean, I know the agenda seems long, it's all the items, we can go down each and one of them, but I just wanted to list what's been completed to date. But the ultimate goal in the task for the test report, pump test report, was to get approval from us, the EP. We submitted in February along with the permit application for approval of pump test report for over 70 gallons a minute, and it was approved. We got the approval on June 22nd, so that was kinda... I mean, we were working on the project anyway, but you know, we really didn't want to get too far into until we got their approval and make sure that we got the flow rates that we were looking for and their approval. But that went smoothly and not a problem at all. I mean, actually, it's a high-producing well. You're only permitted for, I think, 114 gallons a minute. But I think that the actual yield of the well could have been up to 500 gallons a minute or more. You can, we can size the pump for one and a half times what the permitted rate is, so we can't go much higher than that. But we'll broaden, we'll span that range so that at certain times, if you have a pump down or a well down, that the well can operate at a higher rate than the permitted rate, just as long as over the year, it averages at 114 gallons a minute. And Jeff manages that well anyway. And I mean, most of the time during the summer, you can have all the wells on anyway, under most circumstances, but it gives you some flexibility there, so we were happy to get that approval. We also completed the raw water hydraulics evaluation, which was task four, and I've attached the memo that we put together for that. You guys can read it at your leisure, I know you're just getting it today, but we can talk briefly about that. But it's as we suspected, I mean, I know that Jeff and Brad had indicated that there were some restrictions in the raw water piping system, not only pipe diameter, but what we found was that their, the C-values were really low. It's a 12-inch PVC pipe, which normally has a C-factor of 120 or more. And we're looking at, I think the results were, when we did a C-value test on it, the C-factor test on it was 44 to 68, so it is significantly reduced. And the reason for that, as we suspect, is the manganese that's been pumped through, and at a low rate, so the pumps are pumping at a low rate that's not scouring the pipe, and all the manganese is settling out into the pipe. So you're basically about half the capacity of that 12-inch pipe.
We're talking about C to 1 now, or 2 or 3?
It's all, all the way through, yeah.
Well, there is a problem with some Ts and some elbows and stuff, too.
Especially at well 2, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It reduces down, yeah.
That fights C of 3.
Yeah, and the one thing that we did notice during the pump tests that, you know, obviously, and there wasn't anything that was new to Jeff, was that, you know, when we were operating the wells to do the pump, we did pump tests on all the pumps to establish curves, and all the curves we've documented in the memo, you can see them right here for all of the pumps. And they're operated on BFDs, but there was significant drawdown in some of the wells, so that at C to 3, you had to actually stop it and go to the, at a lower rate, just because they were concerned at the time that it was going to draw down too close to the stream, so we don't want that to happen. So the, I mean, it's operating fine right now, and it's just gonna, the pumps are gonna operate at a different speed in order to provide the flow that you need, because of the restrictions in the pipe. But we provided some recommendations on how you can flow it, flush it, or ice pig it. But you're gonna have to get a lot of water in high velocities in order to get that scouring, to get that sediment out of the pipe, so, you know, we're gonna design, you know, obviously Cedar Street well number 1, will design for the existing conditions, but with a range so that you can operate if that should change on the BFDs, so.
Well, I don't like doing stuff twice, so let's kind of back up here two steps.
Sure.
So C to 3 is on the end, then we have 2, and then we have one across the street.
Yeah.
I don't know off the top of my head, but I know there's a problem in piping between, what, C to 2 and the road, or 3 and 2?
2. 2 and 3.
So it's between 2 and 3?
It's a confined district, so they go pumping the same.
But there's something about those elbows and Ts and around and flow, so what is the recommendation here to straighten this out, to make this flow the right way and do it once?
That would take an ASB build of what we have there. And then theoretically, probably getting Cedar 2 right to the street, and Cedar 3 right to the relatively close to the street, like, because they bump into each other.
All right, the question is, are you gonna change this design so it's one and done if we make changes to this side of the street?
Well, that's, because it's downstream of it, it's really not gonna affect...
It shouldn't affect that.
That's not gonna affect Cedar, Cedar 1 there, because it pumps here in this way. These are pumping this way. I mean, it'll have a little bit of an effect on it headwise, but anything you do over here with the piping is not really gonna affect the operation.
So these two pipe, whatever they do now, go into the pipe over here, and Cedar 1 goes over here?
Yes, because they're both connected to the same pipe. They connect, they end up connecting to the same pipe, but anything we do to the piping down there is not gonna affect Cedar 1.
Cedar 1 does, it used to come all the way over, but they didn't away with that. It goes right into the distribution system.
You provided us a sketch, that the plans right now, that's how we showed it from what you showed us, so like...
I just don't want to do stuff twice.
No, it's a...
If, if we have to change, if this is gonna be an ASB build, where we straighten this out for good, where we can get more water, and you design this the right way, then I want to change this, because why do we keep talking about it? We've been here now, what, three, four years, and we keep saying, "Yeah, there's a problem here, but..."
It's a separate issue, and it has nothing to do with this.
It would have, it's, it's, it won't have any issue to, with the, the operation.
So everything you build, flow, everything's not gonna... Okay, that's my question, because I don't want to do anything, because if this is a problem, which we already know there's a problem, but around here, we don't fix problems. We talk about it for 10 years, we don't fix it. No, 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 I'm just saying, so I want to come up with a game plan to fix this, because we do have the manpower to straighten this out. So Jeff gets more flows, and it's easier on the pumps, it's easier on the wells, so...
I think ultimately, like, from the raw water hydraulic analysis, like, even if the piping's an issue down there, you have 27,000 feet of transmission main from here to your treatment plant, and that's where the buildup's occurring, where your, your headbods restrictions are. So changing stuff down here might help the pumps a little bit, but ultimately that transmission main...
Well, supposedly, from what you've said before, it will.
Not down here.
For this one, this one has a pump issue.
2 and 3, 2 and 3, just stay on 2 and 3 for a second.
Yeah, they're across the street.
Yeah, we're 2 and 3, and that's one.
All right, this is 1, all right, so we'll talk about it.
2 and 3 here.
So this is, we're, we're working on 1 right now.
This would be like our job, like, this is like, okay, we're doing this.
Yeah, I know it's not part of this, but I don't want this to be done if this is gonna...
No, it's a great question, and I, and I, and I'm glad you brought it up. I mean, we want to make sure that the raw water system is improved. Anything that happens down here, like Jeff says, will probably have to happen another time, because we're only, obviously, this, this was, you know, because you were down, I mean, you're, I think it's 114 gallons per minute is what the permitted rate is, and you were down at, what, 44?
Well, that's where we're back at now.
Yeah, so that'll improve that, because we're replacing the well, and replacing all the piping here, so... So that'll improve the operation of this well, and we'll size the pump so that it can operate on, with the, the raw water system downstream of it to the treatment plant, the way that it is right now, so it can operate that way, but the design won't change. I mean, it'll just operate at a different speed on the BFD.
That's right.
So...
Right, because if we lose 2 wells over there, and we can pump 200 for 3 weeks.
Yeah, absolutely.
As long as the well doesn't flog up, I mean, but that's out of our control.
Yeah.
We won't know until it gets online.
Yeah, well, it, it, you shouldn't have to worry about that for seven years, you might have to...
The technology's better.
Redevelop it while then, so...
The beads they put in there now are better than what they had.
Thanks, but, and we have sets for everybody here, you can take them back, and you can take a look at them if you have any questions, but... And, you know, it's only 50% right now, so if you have any, you know, questions or comments, we can obviously adjust them. And Keith and I have some questions that Keith will go through, and we, you know, he's gonna kind of run through the design phase of this. But the hydraulic analysis basically kind of confirmed what we wanted, but it also provided us with a hydraulic model, so that we can, we can run that in any different scenario with any different C-values now, to determine what we need to do to, you know, properly size the pump right here. Your question's a good one, but, you know, we have the information now that we can design it, and nothing will have to change after that. So the technical memo for that is included as an attachment to this, you can take a look at that. And I, I, you know, this one, well, I, you know, unfortunately, the project got kind of sidetracked with the pipette testing and all, but, but we're on track right now, and I think I'm gonna turn it over to Keith now, and he can talk a little bit off the agenda about the drawings, and maybe thumb through a little bit, and bring up some questions that we have.
Yeah, I think actually while we're on, kind of talking about some of the piping, one of the things I did have a question on for this is basically the way we come out here and connect, because what we're showing right now is like, we know it comes out, you come from where the well is, it comes through, comes straight out, we have a hydrant here, we know it comes out here, there's a gate valve there, we can see it. Then the sketch you provided us shows it coming, actually, go back to the last one.
Across the street?
Yeah. So it comes in and like, shows it doing this, which is kind of nuts, I don't think it really does it.
It doesn't go over the street anymore.
Okay, so this 12-inch, the raw water transmission line?
Well, no, it, it, so...
So this is like coming out of well 1A? That's just the sketch, it's probably not doing 290s, but...
No, it probably does.
It might, it very well might.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll get some more confirmation on that, but I wouldn't doubt it.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's a disaster down there.
So it used to go across the street, right? How it got across there, I don't know where, how it's at our street.
Yeah, so that's down to 290.
So yeah, it would have come here, here, and across the street. So now it goes like this, this, into the transmission main.
Okay, yeah, so I'm showing the 12-inch a little further off, just like the sketch you had was a little tough. So this is probably higher up in the street where that existing main you have.
Yeah, the raw water.
Well, I think this is just a distribution main.
Is the raw water closer to the pump?
Where's the raw water main here?
Down here, I'm showing it over here, coming over, because basically that sketch you showed, shows it coming up from here, it does this weird little kind of square thing.
Oh no, yeah, it probably does all kinds of weird, right?
So like, but I guess my point is that, right now, I'm just showing it connect here, so basically we're gonna come over, we'll come in, connect, we'll basically cut off this stuff from the service, we'll, you know, decommission this hydrant, put a new one in for you. But if we wanted to be a little more aggressive with it, and try to get it a more direct connection, we could, or we could be really back off and just connect in the gravel driveway here, and not touch the street.
Can't be fighting 290s again, are you?
Direct would be better.
Yeah, we can, we can replace what's in here and do what should have been done, if that's the case.
Because we're just going backwards like we did at Cedar 3 and 2.
Right, okay, and I think it would just be...
The same.
The one thing, because of the limited records, and one of the things I do want to do is potentially come out and just try to take some swing ties, find as many valves out there as we can, so I can more accurately place some stuff here, just so the contractor...
I can probably do a better job of getting you some better drawings, too, finding some stuff.
Because the thing we'll want to do is just provide a contractor with some direction where it's like, what we want to do is come out here and go straight into the 12-inch transmission main, and...
Now, do you do a street elbow into the main? Do you go ahead of Cedar 2 and 3, or you're behind it? Do we extend it down the road a little bit more? I mean, that's the thing, like, we gotta talk about, too.
I think you, you probably don't want to do too much, it's just kind of a lot of piping, it's just gonna add a fair amount of cost, the further down you go. So right now, based on what we've seen from you guys, is it connects in right behind Cedar 2 and 3. But what Chuck is saying with the, the raw water model that we have, based on the pumping data we did in the field, we could do that, we could change where the piping connects, and just see, see if it does anything different, because...
I would like to, yeah, I would like you guys to do that, because if it changes a lot, then we would...
No, yeah, absolutely.
You know what I mean, if we, if we go down another 10 feet with the raw main transmission line, get rid of 90s and 45s?
Yep.
And if, you know, because I understand what you're saying about water fighting each other, and I know we're getting more water out of 2 and 3 than we do 1, so do you put 1 in front of 2 and 3?
Yeah, we can, we can do that, we can take a look at that. I, you know, we, we wanted to ask the question, because what, what you're saying is what I would recommend, but I want to make sure that you're good with that, because it's gonna cost you more money. But I would...
We do it now.
We do it right.
I mean, we need to get as much water as we can here, and this is the whole...
That's why we're doing it.
So I would recommend that, you know, you do a couple of 45s come across and tie in right here, and then you can just take out all the...
I mean, that's our land anyway, on the other side of the street.
Yeah, you guys, you own everything in here, so...
So as far as land-wise, and we're only digging up the street once, so whatever, which way we have to do it, I mean...
Right.
I don't...
And I think that the, the main thing that, that is gonna be important is the contractor will just need to do a little work, you know, it might be a couple more test bits, basically, to just find this 12-inch, because we don't know exactly where they connect it, we could probably find here.
Regnos, regnos exactly this, we can always call in one of the old retirees if we had to.
Okay, Regno though.
Yeah. Yeah, he can pinpoint to the inch of where it is.
Okay, great. Yeah, no, then that'll make things a lot easier, because like you're saying, then we would just do a 90, come over here, you'll see where this is, because we'll have a gate valve mystery here, and then we can connect in, you know, you guys will have record drawings from this, so we'll actually, you know, tell you exactly where it connects, and everything like that.
We're decommissioning the old building.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's the thing, so everything in here, right now, the plans that we have right now are showing, decommission everything, you know, they'll, they'll take the piping out, cap everything, electrical panels will come down and stuff. As of right now, I don't believe we talked about demoing the building.
But everything's out of there, the pipe will not go through.
The antenna's gonna come off here, go on the new building. One of the things with the, the electrical is, talking to our electrical sub, is, this is too far, you'd have to put a pole in to do above ground, so what we think might be, would be easier, and we don't have to do this, we could reevaluate the pole, but it's just to do underground.
Oh my god, please do underground.
It's a little more...
All right, so say that again, because I can probably swindle a pole, so go ahead.
Okay, sure.
You might swindle, what I'm saying is, I can, I mean, I work with the engineer, I mean, this is...
When we were out there with the electrical sub, this is a, a couple months ago now, he said, "This distance is too far, they don't want to see you do a single service line over like 150 feet," or something like that. So we have to put a pole in somewhere here, or coming off of this pole here, but the problem is, there's quite a few trees over here, this side probably anymore, so...
We have problems with that.
So you have to, it would probably involve taking down a couple trees, putting the pole in, and then redoing the connection, which is fine. Or we can come off this pole here, underground, and just pull it right in. And, you know, if there's a way you guys can do a pole cheaper, you know, that maybe it's not...
I'll talk to my engineer and see if we can, because I'm not sure if National Grid is still doing one pole for free, which I think on businesses they are. So, I mean, obviously, we'd have to get, you know, an easement and all that stuff, which is all our land anyway, so I mean, if I can get the pole put in, obviously, it's easy to do a little bit of tree work and get rid of the trees, if we can get the pole for nothing, because now it's staying, is it, is it a Delta service now? Which I gotta find out, if it is Delta, which I don't know if National Grid is still doing Delta, we'll have to talk with the motor manufacturer, so that's one thing that we need to find out.
Yeah, we'll talk to the electrical, I mean, actually, we have a conversation with them tomorrow, so...
Okay, just find out if it, if, because I can't remember if this is a Delta service.
For the motor?
Yeah, what's in this one now, because I know, not last time that we had to fix, there was an issue, or why, right, or...
It's like a, it's US, probably US, I don't know.
All right, let me, yeah, let's just find out what, what this is.
We might have it in the pictures or something.
It's gonna take a little while, because I ran it in his out...
The pump that they're putting in is gonna be totally different, so...
Yeah, but what you have there already is, is 25 horsepower, 3-phase...
Are you gonna leave the pump in there?
No, 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 we won't, we'll, we'll demo it, everything's gonna go. But what the power required for this, what we're putting isn't, isn't gonna need anything more. If, if anything, it'll be 30 horsepower instead of 25, but I'm thinking ballpark.
Yeah, that won't change the bank, because I already think it's a 50K backup there, so...
No, I think power wise, we're, we're good, because it's already 3-phase and everything.
Okay.
I mean, no...
One thing I did want to say, just, I'm backtracking to the other one, I just wanted to, because I thought the question might come up, and I just wanted to clarify. You know, the, the pump was, the production mill was rated for 655 gallons a minute. You, you can only do one and a half times what the permitted rate is. You, you could have potentially re-permitted the well and asked for more volume out of that, but it's a non-conforming well, because it's within the...
Didn't we try that, though? And they said no?
Yeah, you can, that's what I, that's what I, the point that I wanted to make, because the Zone 1 extends into Cedar Street, and the water company has to own the whole, all the land in Zone 1. So it's, it's a non-compliant well, but we're actually moving it farther back off the road, so they appreciated that. So I didn't have any concerns about it being permitted, but, you know, it's just unfortunate that you don't own all the, all the land in the Zone 1, because you could have potentially gone back and asked for a reevaluation of your permanent limits.
I mean, at times, if we need the 200 gallons a minute, and if we can keep it at 114, 365, I mean, that's a big difference than 45.
Four times what we've been running.
Right, so I mean, that's...
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
In that time, like you said, you definitely... I'm not saying we always have a well down, but we got one down now, so we could be, you know, we could run it.
And I, and I, you know, I credit you for moving forward this project, because as you know, I mean, just with the way that the, the flow rate has dropped off on this, it's time. It's time to replace the well, so...
Now, all these costs, obviously, electricians, demo, I mean, if I can do some of this in-house, that's our prerogative?
Yes, but...
We need to specify that ahead of time on the plans, that, you know, typically, when we do that in a contract, we'd say in here, like, "Demo of this, buy others," and then we just need to make sure that you guys can do it ahead of time. The electrical stuff is a little tricky, because we want to keep everything up and running before we do the system, so, I mean, timing wise, it might be tough, I don't know.
Well, electrical is fine, I mean, we have our own guy, but I mean, you guys have a contractor, that's fine, but we really have to talk to see if, about demo, and we talked about that before, about trying to save some, about doing our own demo.
As far as that building goes?
Right. I mean, it's not, it... Well, we gotta look, I mean, is it cost basis?
Well, what we're gonna do is, at the end of this, we'll, we'll get you a cost estimate for it.
So it's either gonna be demo, or it needs to be worked, and why keep it?
No, that's fine, but I still think that Charlie and the dumpsters and...
Yeah, you'd have to, right.
Are you talking about demo in this building?
Correct.
Okay, I would wait until the project's done, and then everything's out of it, and then you can go and do it.
Correct. Well, right, but it's still, if we have to tell them if we're gonna do it or not, what you just said.
They're not adding that in the scope.
No, no, because all of... Oh, sorry, the, the building itself taken? Oh, yeah, no, no, that, because if you're doing that post everything, then no, they don't need to know anything about that.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought you were talking about equipment demo inside.
Oh, no, 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 okay.
Because, because all the equipment, we're gonna demo in here, and then just leave the structure, and then you can come in and take the structure down after.
But when they say it's all clear, it's...
Yeah, all right.
And would be, then we can tell.
And then this building's staying, so obviously, we're gonna be moving the fence back, and then what, including it in?
Actually, we can go to the next sheet, and then we'll talk, show more about this, this site.
So, so right now, I don't show the, the fence coming all the way back, that's something that, dang it, we didn't show that, some of them, we don't always enclose the actual well itself, the pitch, but...
It's unnecessary.
Yeah, so as long as you guys...
If nobody's getting...
Probably you're comfortable with it.
Nobody can dump stuff in it, nobody can bring anything.
The tops are sealed on these, because the only way to access is through the, the pillars adapters, they're locked up.
You'd need a crane to pick it up.
Yeah.
And the DEP doesn't require anything?
No, we've done, we just, actually, I gave, I gave Keith a couple of examples that we did, in Foxborough, we did the same thing, we cut the fence off here, and we had the well adapter back there.
Easton has a bunch of them, on the woods.
And actually, Seaconc was the same way as well, that we did, so...
Okay.
So we're good there.
And the good thing is, is the well drill can get back there without having to move the fence.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, yeah, good call.
And then, one other thing with the piping, too, is since we're coming up here, this is, you know, this driveway is a little combo pavement, broken up in gravel, so for replacing this, so, you know, we'll come over, anything in the main road, obviously, will be fully restored pavement, right? That's, you don't want to mess with that out there. But in terms of things back in here, do you guys want to do anything with this drive? Because I was thinking of just replacing with the gravel, compact gravel, and just...
I'll get some, some heavy grindings, and probably put that in, unless DEP doesn't like it, but I'll get to it.
Then I'll run it.
No, we'll, we'll show, we'll show, basically, they'll, they'll backfill up with gravel to the top, and we'll use bedding material, if the pipe come off right at the surface, then you guys can do whatever, I'm thoughtful. I think, right, especially when the rest of the...
There's no reason to go back there.
Yeah, it's already broke, it's already nothing.
Now, you're going from the well inside the building, and then back out?
Yeah, so this will just have some sample ports, emergency chlorine injection, things like that, a couple valves, and then air release and stuff like that. It's just for accessibility, make it easier, you have the building, then I'll have control panels and stuff in here for the well, too. So it's a little tighter than this building, obviously, so, you know, it's a little squeeze, the piping's gonna go all the way across. We're actually gonna come out above ground and insulate and go back under, because we need the extra space inside, if you put a 90 and go through the floor, one, it's more coring and stuff, but two, it just limits our space in there, so that's how we have it right now. And the electrical, there's things, no problem, and the panels in there and everything.
Yeah, we were kind of sort of about code violations, potentially, with the pipe being too close to the electrical panels, but they made sure...
These are my clearance for it, so...
And then you're gonna do, you wanna do electric heat from now on?
Okay.
Gonna get rid of all the propane?
Yeah, I wanna, yeah, we wanna get rid of propane.
Okay, no, that's good.
There is no propane heating?
Well, there is, but it doesn't work. I was gonna say that there is the heater unit there, which we were gonna replace, but we don't have any spec for that yet, so...
I would just throw in electric heater, yeah.
We've got the mechanical ones, too, if you want to take them.
The building's so small.
We can do that, man.
Okay, that's a good, that's a good point. Can we add, can we look into adding a generator, electrical, on the outside of the building? So if we do have to feed with a generator?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna talk to the electrical sub tomorrow, so we can...
Right, it'd be a... Can you also, can you, I agree with that, can we also get a quote for propane?
Oh.
Just to see what the two quotes are, like, if it's crazy, standalone, you know what I mean, like a standalone propane? Obviously, it's gonna be big, I don't know what kind of money you're looking at, but the connection for the, what do you call it?
Transfer switch.
Transfer switch and all that, what are the two, what are the differences? Because I'm, because we have the propane there, and we also have two units that can be moved. And if we had to get another one, we'd get another...
So at least have the generator plugged on the outside of the building?
Right.
So if we need to backfeed it, and then you can get a quote for a standalone propane, which is gonna be big money generally, 3Ks, I mean, that's gonna be...
Huge.
Yeah.
60K W.
And, and like, the tanks you have out there aren't big enough, probably, to actually, to actually run a propane generator.
For a while.
Typically, they'll, they'll bring a big tank.
Well, we have a couple military generators, so if something were to go bad, Well, we have a couple military generators on, so if something were to go bad, we can take it from Cedar 3 and just drive it down there on a pickup truck,
Okay.
plug in and go.
Okay, that'd be.
You already mean, since we have two of them.
Sure.
So, it's just, at least we can have a.
Take it back for you there.
Yeah, whatever it is, if it's a.
It's huge. Probably could get another one too, if we want them, probably. They have 190 hours, right?
Now, the old pump and motor we keep?
If you have a reason to, to store it somewhere and you guys wanna hang on to it, sure.
It's still a good pump and motor, so I'd say hold on to it.
Yeah, yeah, cause the, the plan would be right now that they, they'll pull this out and demo it, you know, we wanna get the, the pad flush, cause actually the, the pad being raised is like, you know, cleaner sink for each other, they don't wanna see anything in the way within three feet of the, front of the panels, so. Well, that'll be cut down flush, and, uh, if you guys wanna hang on to the pump, sure. Yep, throw in the spec and make sure they hang on to that. Yeah, cause there's something here actually really isn't in bad shape at all, it's just not, you know, the well itself isn't getting what you need, so. Um, so, so yeah, so basically, this, this general layout for that, this is gonna be the new one, it's basically just doing a little more than this because some of, you know, your flow meter is currently in the old building out front for this setup, so you have, you're using existing space, so we're kinda cramming a little more back here. And the flow meters need a little space in the front and back, just to be able to keep steady flow so they read properly. Um, and other than that, so, you know, check valve, couple ports for chlorination, sample tap, the pressure gauge to be able to monitor what the well's doing and everything like that. Um, so pretty standard setup, and then you already have the little drain and sump out there, so for the pressure release valve, that'll just go right to that little floor drain, you guys already have it soaked out there, so that works out, so there's really not too much besides the core, and like I said, we're, we're gonna come in above grade just to give us the extra space. So we'll insulate the pipe, everything that's not more than five feet below, be insulated all the way up to the building, and, you know, we can mound the ground a little if we need to, but, you know, we don't always have to do that, so.
I have kind of a silly question, this is way, it's a little off topic, but I have a question, and it's very expensive, but I have a question. Iron and manganese and our capacity in, in pumping water, right, is our main problem. Cedar 1, Cedar 2, Cedar 3. Why didn't, would it be feasible, or why didn't somebody design pumping these three wells into, let's say, a tank that got treated before it went into 200,000 gallon tank, or whatever, it was treated, iron manganese removal, and then that got pumped to us to here? You know, pretreated iron manganese, not, not full blown, but then it came to here, and you had sort of a reservoir of water that we were pumping here. Is that something that could have been done, or is that silly?
I mean, we talked about having a satellite treatment facility down here with.
Yeah.
But.
But like you have this, you could have this reservoir of a few hundred thousand gallons of water that is kind of your reserve, raw water, that gets pumped to this place, you know?
I don't.
I think money is probably the answer to your question, cause doing something like that right now would be, you know, millions, millions of dollars.
I get it, it was just a bit.
Well, I, it's, it's a good question, because, you know, I think sometimes the concern for if you weren't over the, you know, the MCL, then people are like, yep, that's good. You know, and now we know a little more about it, I think, and, you know, manganese and stuff and iron over time can really cause issues for all that stuff, so.
I just wish they pre-treated it somewhere before.
The problem is now none of the pumps are sized to push themselves through a vessel and still get here, so like you're saying, you'd have to put some other reservoir, new pumps, and stuff, and be a lot.
Stop it over, okay, go ahead, sorry, go.
No, no, you're, it's good. Current design practice, you definitely would wanna be prepared for that, either, you know, have some future area you already have marked off to put a plant or something like that, um, but it's, uh.
Or just take that tank down that.
So much of an element, and then pop it down there, as you said.
Helicopter oval, we could do something. You're talking about manganese and, and, uh, iron in the pipe.
Yeah, the transmission main, yeah.
So the transmission main that was on the other page out in front of Cedar 2, all the way here, had zero check valves, all the way?
Yeah, no, we know about that, all the pumps will have them on in the buildings, you know.
Is it worth flushing that main backwards with?
Well, that's kinda what we recommend, uh, uh, either way, you, it's a lot of water and high velocity, so you'd almost have to get a, a pumper truck, uh, to get the velocities that you need, uh, in order to scour the main, because I think that the wells are only pumping at, I mean, maybe.
Combined, it was like 440.
Yeah, but also what, what's the flushing velocity?
All sort of velocity, that was like sub two feet per second.
What size is the pipe?
And you really need.
Twelve inch.
Yeah, you really need.
So like really the pipe's probably too big.
Two and a half feet per second.
You need like 21.
Up to five for.
So basically this ice pegging, basically come down to it.
Yeah.
In order to get the 12 inch really scoured, you're looking at 2100 gallons a minute.
Yes, that's not a lot.
From my, from what we used to do in, by six times.
When we were putting the member together, we had to six times.
2100 gallons a minute was 12 inch for us.
Yeah, you did. They have recirculation trucks where you basically have, you know, pumper trucks, you throw it through, you make connections, you either cut in, or if you, with your hydrants and stuff like that, you really. It's always so, and then you kinda, it just pumps into itself, and, you know, so that's water you chuck in, it's kinda pricey, but it's a good way to make sure you get the velocity, and you have to, you probably have to break up, cause it's such a long run, you know, five minutes or whatever.
At that point, it's probably better off ice pegging. Right?
But I think that, you know, the way that, you know, you had the right idea that you wanted to flush it, but you're flushing it with finished water at, at the end of your system, and then you just bring the water through, and it's causing water quality problems, and you really gotta do it.
Well, we could prob, we could do, we can do a flush, but maintaining it over that distance is.
Yeah, you'd have to do smaller sections probably, and then.
We have, we, we can only do it from that one point.
Well, that check valve, you'd never do it, there's no, there's no skate valves on that kind of machine, right?
No, no, we can put, we can go hydrant, we have, we have hydrant to, in a backflow tube, you know, and then, so we can, we can garner like some force, probably get up to, with the 400 coming from the wells, and then another six or so coming from, six or eight coming from the, um, from the hydrant, let's say, per se. But it's, it's going from there all the way to Walker Street, where you're losing so much, like, you, we, again, you don't, you can't bow tight.
Definitely gonna get the velocities either if you use an existing pump, so.
It would help, but it's not gonna clear.
Right.
And, and Jeff's done that before, but, um, what we're seeing now, you know, it's just.
We didn't get a lot out of it, we were like, wow, we're, we didn't get a lot out of it the time we did it. It, it, it noticeably reduced by the time we got to the bend, I forget what street that is, that really hard, uh, I'll have to try it right away. It was like, wow, it's clean, but it wasn't coming out.
Unfortunately, the pipe is just too big for the flow that you get out of there, it's, it's gonna be really tough, unfortunately, it was designed a little smaller, made it, uh, it can maintain a little bit of velocity.
Yeah. An eight would have been better, I mean, especially if you're blowing 440 gallons, what do you need a 12 for?
Yeah, yeah, that's probably me too.
Well, if you had nine more wells attached to it, then we would say.
Well, that's exactly, this is future planning, but probably exactly why we did that.
Right.
Well, you're already putting the intention plan for it, but unfortunately, larger sized pipe causes other issues too. Yeah, so, so this is pretty simple, right now, so we're still actually waiting for the, uh, the electrical folks, um, plans, but that should be coming shortly, and internally, next week, we're gonna do kind of our last quarter review for this. We haven't picked a pump yet because, like we were just talking about with the raw, raw water hydraulics, we're still, we know the ballpark we have to be in, but because of the kinda little weird head conditions going on, like you're saying, sometimes when these pumps pump, they're pumping against the other ones, and we don't want our pump to overpower the existing ones there, um, and, you know, especially with the P FAS, I think, you guys need to be a little bit conscious about that, and, you know, right now, you're under 20, so it's, it's okay, and your finisher was fine. Um, but it's definitely something to think about too, um, if you're running this one high when the other ones are low and stuff, and, so, we're gonna play with that a little bit and finalize that over next week too. And then, you know, we'll play with where that connection is too. I don't think it'll make too, to give a difference if we're in front or behind it, but, you know, it'll be something that we can check with, and, uh, you know, get to know that we wanna kinda cut out that stuff in the middle of the street there, so we know where to go with that. Now, this is just the demo for the old, the old building, you know, which is gonna be the cutout, we'll, we'll have to cap the pipe outside in here, we'll cap it in the floor, and then just remove all the stuff in the middle. The electrical guys' plans will show the demo of the panels and stuff. One of the things I, I did want to know is, like, this control panel looks like it's in like pretty decent shape, I don't know that we could totally reuse it, but it's worth kinda considering, uh, like the pipe itself. So I, I wasn't sure if you knew the age of that, I, I couldn't find any of the stuff that we have.
Take a ride down there and see what it looks like.
Have to take a look, so it's possible.
Yeah, it's, it's just.
Yeah, I bet we could use it for Walker 2, if there's something, if there's a switchgear, I don't even know what it is, if there's breakers in it or if it's.
No, it's not that the breaker panels are all over here, this is just, uh, the, basically all the pump logic and.
All the SCADA, yeah, we'll just make sure.
Oh, that's Paul, let's talk to Paul, see what he says.
Cause if you have any issues with it and stuff.
What Paul will that?
And what we can do too is, like, you know, follow up with the notes from this meeting and stuff too, and we can put a list of questions, you know, those things for us to keep in touch with.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that's it, so nothing too much going on on the main building, we're basically, you know, they'll, they'll disconnect all the electric and stuff, so it's de-powered, no, no more pipes in the floor and stuff, and and you guys could use it for storage or something for the time being, until you wanna do it. Detail for, can't provide, and the last set here is all the, the logic control, so this is legend notes, um, for the different tags, um, for basically, we're gonna level the pump, right, and then pressure in the building and stuff like that to be integrated with the SCADA, so that way you guys can, you know, one, control the BFD down there and stuff, see what's going on, and also get your alarms. The, the one thing, um, actually that, uh, also asking you is, do you currently have alarms on the doors down there?
Oh, yeah. That needs to be done.
Do, do you want an alarm for this building to?
Yeah.
Because we talked about putting it in.
We have to, we have to do them all.
Waiting on SCADA, but yeah, that would be good.
Yeah, okay, because you can always tie it in, uh, later, and the other thing is, right now, it's, it's radio connection, right, the, everything you have into it, cause there was a question about the, the frequency and stuff that you guys used, that, I'll put that, I'll, I'll put it in.
We have to communicate with them too, if you're.
Yeah, I will.
Have you ever worked with Paul, like, from our controls? If you want, we can reach out to him.
Yeah, sure.
I'll, I'll give his number, and.
Yeah.
Reach out to him, please, you know.
And then the other thing I think you don't have currently too is, um, to put a sensor in there for if like the building itself starts flooding. Okay, so that's it. But everything else is basically the same, and you'll see.
I mean, you're getting an alarm in there, you have, uh, what would be, uh, temperature sensor, all that?
Yeah. Yeah, so you have the temperature.
The heat goes out, boom, you get out.
Exactly, yeah, it's a temperature sensor, level sensor in the well, and then the pressure transmitters.
Okay.
So this is just kinda the interlocking stuff right now, basically everything's gonna come back to your tree, tree and plant stuff here, so you guys can just be integrated with the SCADA that you have now, um. You know, all this fancy little details here, same thing with the alarms, it's level alarms, flow alarms, and then the, uh, the flood, the flood and the building alarms aren't in here yet, because I also want to talk with you guys first, but those are the things that, you know, we'll put in here, so the contractor comes in, they'll do it, and then if you don't have the building alarm setup up here yet, um, once you get that, you just have to get the controls guys back up there to type in, so.
Now, I'm, I'm sure you'd wanna work with Paul through construction as part of it too.
Yeah, he's gonna need some detail on this.
Yeah, so we can talk to him, and he, and we've done it, I mean, it's tricky with the public bidding laws in Massachusetts, but if he's your guy, um, we can work around that, and we can talk internally about that, and see how we wanna do that. I mean, we've had that happen.
Yeah.
We, we actually maintained a lot of those.
Okay.
Stuff, so. Maybe not named him, but worked out a way that he could have him do.
I don't know, I mean, how does that work? I mean, we, we deal with him, he knows the system, it's not.
We could either contract with him separately, or we, we could contract with him on our construction services contract and just take it out of the, you know, negotiate the scope and fee with him, and he's always very reasonable, and he knows your stuff, so.
Yeah, I don't wanna go name anybody else.
Yeah, so we can, we can, you know, we just did that in separate, we've done it in several ones, so. We did it in Seconk too, and actually Paul, well, that was integrated there, so.
As far as the alarms go, which was, been a plan for a while, but I've been waiting on him and some SCADA upgrades.
Yeah.
Like, do you have five other wellhouses, four other wellhouses that I would like alarms on?
Yeah.
Um, so whatever you deal with, with him, that.
We want uniformity on all of the.
Well, I think we, we were supposed to do something a while ago.
It was, but.
And we're waiting on him for a while, you know, me, we're waiting, so this is kinda like getting to the end of my waiting stage, so we need to do something.
Yeah, no, we can talk.
Cause we were supposed to do some upgrades ahead too, that we're waiting on him too, so it's like, there's been a lot of waiting, and I know the co-busers and a lot of the stuff, but. I know, but we're all busy, so.
Right, well, what we could do is we can talk to him and, and integrate it into the project if you want, I mean, it sounds like you want it anyway, I don't, well, actually, I don't know if we can.
Yeah, you just don't know, I would have to.
No, I mean, this is fine, but we wanna just make sure that.
Okay.
If you do get him on the horn, say, hey, listen, this is getting.
Whatever you put in, it's going in the other wells too.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's true.
Cause we've been waiting on it for at least a year now, so.
From, I talked to him this week, they followed up.
Okay, we can talk to him. And from two sides.
Okay, so, and then that's, that's it for now, so we're, we're just, like I say, waiting on the electrical stuff, but that's gonna be pretty straightforward, it'll look like.
Yeah, our subs very good, and they'll, I mean, it is straightforward, they've done some of the design for us, so, and, and done well, so.
Yeah, and, and we'll, we'll talk to them tomorrow, so we have a couple of questions from you guys for them, and then, you know, kinda finalize this stuff for the next couple of weeks here, and, uh.
What do you think you're gonna start on this?
So, the next step would be, um, we have to submit this to DEP, so that they have to review it for well installation permit, and so, um, once we get the design done, we'll submit that for them. We also, which is a, a shorter timeframe, is we're gonna have to get on the Conservation Commission's agenda for notice of intent.
With the town, or the state?
Conservation Commission at the, at the town.
Yes, that should be that.
Yeah, and we are, we've actually already communicated with them for the well, you don't really need to do an NOI for just installing the well, but the fact that we're in the buffer zone of the, the well ones.
Yeah.
Anne Marie, our, our hydrogeologist, communicated with them and just let them know what the process was, and I said, that's fine. I forget who the agent is.
I think so.
Yeah, she was very, she was, you know, great, she understood that we were doing it. So we'll communicate with her probably next week to let her know that we're gonna be submitting something, try and get on the agenda there, but that, that's a shorter fuse. I think that the one thing that you'll find, you know, that was really difficult during the pandemic was, was DEP and getting timely reviews out of them, whether it be for the initial, um, test well program and pump tests, and to review that and stuff, and get a letter back from them, and then ultimately, it took that, it normally should take two months, and it took them three and a half or so for this most recent approval, so, I think, or thereabouts, um, so. So that, that is still pending, I mean, I, I, we're close, I mean, obviously you can see Keith's done a great job with the design to this point, um, we only have really the electrical, and, um, we'll go, after that's done, then we'll do our full quality management review, which will probably happen next week, and in parallel, we'll submit the NOI with the Conservation Commission. As soon as we address the comments from the quality management review, we'll submit it to DEP, and then, you know, I'm hoping a couple of months before we get that going, um, get to the bid phase. So, on the second page of the agenda, um, unless, I mean, we can answer any other questions that you have along the way, but, um, you know, I, I just put down a, a list of the timeline and the, and the, um, the schedule, so. To answer your question, Derek, we have the Conservation Commission and, um, the nasty EP's submission of that, uh, permit, and we're anticipating that we'll do that in September, and hopefully, um, we'll get permit approvals sometime towards the end of October maybe, and then the bid phase in November, or the construction contract in December, and then start construction early, early next year, with the, with the plan to have it online before summer. Now, that's normally about a four month construction period, so, you know, we weigh in there.
I think it's really not that much worse.
No, the only thing, the only thing I would caution is the supply chain issues and.
Andre, right, we can't, right, you can't.
What we, we, what we have been doing is, as soon as we get the bids, we actually, um, would ask during the review process of them to start pulling together their shops, if they're a good contractor, and you know that they're gonna do that, so that they can submit their shops as soon as you sign, they sign a contract with you, and then, you know, we'll review them immediately and, and get the orders in, so that they can hopefully not have any issues with that.
Good thing is pipe has been pretty available, so.
Yeah.
But it's probably.
I mean, it, it depends, but ductile iron pipe, uh, at least recently has been, oh, okay, just, uh, at least in the smaller diameters and stuff like that.
Gotcha.
But it's getting better, but.
This isn't really like.
Yeah, I mean, we're only talking.
Hundred feet.
To it, you know, hundred fifty feet.
Um, I did wanna, um, also, I'll go ahead.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
I did all, also wanna keep, basically, we're about a year behind on this project, so normally I thought we were gonna be moving forward, cause mainly because of the P FAS testing, and it delayed the project until we had, actually had to go through all that stuff. Um, so we've incurred additional costs, so, um, not that we have to, I, I don't have the numbers right now, but I talked to Jeff about it, and, um, really, we're gonna probably need a little bit of extra compensation for the design and the construction phase, only because, you know, this should have been, we should have actually had the well in, all right? You know, you know, the, the timeline for the project originally was to have it fully constructed and operational this summer, um, and for the delays that occurred, you know, obviously out of our control, uh, mainly because of that P FAS testing, but also because of extended nasty EP reviews and COVID in general, um, were, uh, you know, delayed by a, a year. So I only mention that now, Jeff and I are gonna meet over the next month, and I'll pull together some numbers, and just, would appreciate if you guys would consider that at the next meeting, but, you know, we can talk in more detail about that, um, next time, but by next month, we'll have a better picture of where we are with all the permitting and everything, um, we'll have the design done. You guys can take us out of the drawings if you have any questions.
Yeah, I'll show, I mean, Jason, we're gonna keep Jason abreast on what's going on about this, so.
And like I said, I, I'm always available to come back and, you know, ask some answering questions and talk, so, um, you know, it's unfortunate Jason couldn't be there, but, uh, you know, I have a set of drawings for him, if he wants to come through, and we can meet at the next meeting, through questions he has.
And then what do you wanna do about Greg as far as those connections across the street? Do you wanna have me have him call you? Is there a better time, or how do you wanna?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I could even meet out here again sometime. Yeah, I mean, you know, I could even meet out here again sometime, I, I'm over in Borden, somewhat too far away, I can come back out with them.
Better if you came out here and showed me.
Yeah, cause I, I think that's fine, cause what I'd do is I'd take swing ties and stuff too, so that way I can do stuff based on things that we already surveyed, you know, I'll pick up the things that we have and then measure out those.
Yeah, cause he'll know exactly where I do.
No, that, that would be helpful, because, you know, the better picture we can paint of what's going on up there, the better we can tell the contractor to be able to locate that stuff, though, dig out the street too much, hopefully, so. Uh, because really just like where that twelve inch transmission main is, as long as we can find it, you know, relatively easily, we can trace it back to where we wanna connect and stuff, so. Right, so. And more far with the, you know, minutes we just meeting is up to, and then we can, we can schedule that, um, you know, I can do that anytime, I can assume.
Yeah, actually, we should probably do that with him, just because we're gonna wanna get this to be, so.
Right.
We'll communicate with you and then we can make that work.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, just coming over.
All right. My paper here. There's five copies that you can, from where we want us to give them to, or if you need more.
No, that should be fine.
Um, and we, oh, one thing that we didn't say is, obviously, we didn't, we have a spec and draft form, but I didn't think you guys were gonna read that tonight, right?
Or.
The specifications that go along with this, with all the materials, so, um, and obviously, we want.